How was the food?
Yeah.
It was cafeteria food and week two or three you're like, it's okay. By week six you're like, I gotta get out of here.
You wanna drive you out?
Yeah.
It's very easy to steal stuff from a small little store. Said your store is monitored by cameras. I didn't have cameras. And guess what?
Same color green too.
Yeah. Just thinking about that for us, guessing there might be legal concerns.
What?
About putting up a, you're being monitored without actually having cameras. Insurance.
Let everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. The first item on our agenda is a presentation of the Unsung Hero Award. I'm gonna ask Anne Woodbury to come up and read her nomination.
Absolutely. Hello, everybody. Always a pleasure to be in front of the board, senior staff, and hello, audience. Hello, audience at home. It gives me a lot of pleasure, and I was delighted to be asked to read a little article that I had written at the request of Karen Sweeney, our Parks Director, to commemorate an event that was really fun, and I was included in it and really appreciated being a part of it. And I want to ask you all, can you make something out of nothing? Well, you can if you're Janine Mitchell. Yeah, the answer is yes. She took an unused portion of our Central Park and made a beautiful native plant demonstration garden out of it. Out of nothing came something, a true magic act. She, it's not just a pretty garden either. It's an exemplar garden, and that's a garden that can showcase native plants, can be used as a teaching tool, which it has been and continues to be. Of course, this all makes sense if you knew Janine because she's a longtime member of our township's EAC, Environmental Advisory Council, and a retired educator. Janine got to work along with her loyal brigade of volunteers, EAC members, Penn State Master Gardeners, and Janine had created a beautiful, expanding educational garden of note. And that is not just my opinion. It is a multi-award-winning garden. It's been cited by both the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society multiple times and the Land Ethics Symposium as a winner. There's a new nest area for kids. It's about maybe 14 feet in diameter, I'm not sure, for them to gather and learn about plants and birds, pollinators, and whatever stories we might want to tell. It makes it a special place just for kids to get introduced to gardens and wildlife experiences. The outdoor education actually has a reason for being now. Janine brought that back from, I don't think anybody knew the whiteboard was even there, but now we do, and brought second graders over for bird walks. And we got interrupted with the pandemic, but as everything did. But I'm sure we're gonna get back to that and do more things in our outdoor education area. It's a space that went from a weedy wild space now to a space of beauty, education, bird and wildlife-friendly plants, and everyone can enjoy it, and that is all thanks to Janine. It was her vision. As a surprise, Janine's husband, Steve, ordered a bench from the township's Park and Rec. The ground supervisor, Chris Mason, and his crew installed the bench, and on it, there's a dedication to Janine to mark a significant birthday. It says, "Wife, Mother, Educator, Environmentalist." And I would add grandmother. Steve gets the Husband of the Year Award, and Janine gets the recognition she so richly deserves. It's a special tribute, and thank you for all that you have done. That is one item of what Janine has done in, what, 12 years on EAC? Is it 10? 10 years on EAC? She's accomplished more in 10 years than somebody would in 50 years. She's an amazing person. When I came on to EAC, Janine was not the chair. There, we had a different chair, and he was, went by the book, and it was fine. He gavelled in at seven, we gavelled out at eight. We did not have any supplemental meetings. We didn't do anything other than that one hour a month. And that was fine. I mean, that's sort of what comes. But when Janine became chair, the EAC became the body that I was hoping I was joining initially. She became active, well, she's always been active, but she got everybody else active and everybody else motivated and everybody else excited about being on EAC and believing that we could get things done because she's gotten things done. You're a wonderful, wonderful person to work with. You're a wonderful friend. I love you, and I'm so glad you're being recognized. Sorry.
You supposed to come up here? Walk this way. So, Janine Mitchell, you are the 2023 Unsung Hero for Doylestown Township?
Yes.
Thank you. Anne Woodbury's beautiful letter on your behalf inspired us all to, with big smiles and this beautiful plaque, which says, "The Doylestown Township 2023 Unsung Hero Award is presented to Jean, Jeanne Mitchell, by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors today."
Oh, Barbara, thank you so much.
So, congratulations.
Oh, my goodness.
Well deserved, well deserved. Why don't you come up here with your family and Anne Woodbury and get a picture?
Come on, Steve, come on. Oh, man, this is just fabulous.
Well deserved.
I can't imagine talking about water shells.
Yeah.
That's a nice sign.
Well, you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but Janine Mitchell has something to say?
No, just, I just want to say, this is so fabulous, and I, I'm just so appreciative. And I hope all of you have had a chance to come down and walk through the garden, and I hope that, that you enjoy it and that, and that it keeps on getting better and better every year so that all of us can enjoy it. I, I feel like, you know, hero, really, come on. Just a volunteer who wants to make things a little better. So, I do so appreciate it. Thank you, everyone who was a part of this.
Thank you, thank you.
Wow.
Okay, one other or two little announcements. Not a little announcement, but the board wants to welcome Kiara Razong, our summer intern, to tonight's meeting. She's also helped us out of the concert series, first series, first concert last week. She's from Lafayette College, and she's a real gem. So, we're happy to have you, and she wants to be at tonight's meeting. No figure. We have no Facebook Live today. There's a glitch in our system, so for anyone who's looking for Facebook Live, it's not gonna happen tonight. All right, any public comments regarding agenda items? Seeing none, the next meeting of this board is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. The Finance Committee is meeting with the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for a budget work session on Tuesday, July 18th, at 5:00 PM. Doylestown Township Municipal Building will be closed on July 4th in observance of Independence Day. Keep up to date with township news with the e-news at DoylestownPA.org. It comes to your inbox every Thursday, no, every Friday at 4:00. And upcoming events, tomorrow, the Thompson Performing Arts Series continues with a concert called High Noon, which is the Leonard Skinner Band, starts at 7:00 PM. And you can go to DoylestownRecPA.org or whatever, wait, let me, let me give you the correct. DoylestownRec.org for a complete list of all the concerts. On June 24th, the VIA is hosting its Village Fair in conjunction and in partnership with Doylestown Township. It's at Central Park, beginning at noon. And August 1st is the National Night Out at Central Park, beginning at 4:00 PM, is sponsored by Doylestown Township Police Department. And on August 21st is the annual golf outing at Doylestown Country Club. It's an early start, and I have flyers up here for you to sign up with your foursome. All right, next item on the agenda is the minutes approval for the budget work session on April 18th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, assuming everyone had a chance to read them and there are no changes or corrections?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. And the regular meeting minutes from the June 6th, 2023, meeting?
I have a correction.
Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
I have a correction. On page five, the email, the 515 email does not request or offer to write up an op-ed for Joseph Delkott, that needs to be omitted.
What, what needs to be omitted?
On page five. The, it says Ms. Mannion also commented that Ms. Santa Cecilia requested a resident to write up an op-ed. That is incorrect. That's on, if you look at the email.
The emails, excuse me, the emails are gonna speak for themselves. They're attached in the minutes, so let's, we're gonna just let them speak for themselves, okay? They're written, they're there.
That's her opinion, it's not what's stated in the email. I'm asking for it to be omitted.
The attachments speak for themselves.
I'm asking for the, if that's her opinion, that's not what's stated.
Okay, so then the email, then the, this, it can be changed to her exact words where you can always write an op-ed and get it published in the paper, let's talk. So, if we want it to be changed to that, it can be changed to that.
That's perfectly fine, that is correct.
With that, my correction to that is that I brought Ms. Mannion commented that Ms. Santa Cecilia requested a resident to write an op-ed. We can change it to the wording that was actually in it. What I do want added into the minutes is that Nancy commented back, I never said that. And that's why I asked for the minutes to be put in because she denied that. So, I'd like that stated in the minutes that she denied writing that email. And that's why I requested that they be put into the minutes.
Well, since we're not adding opinions, the reason I responded that way and actually forgotten was because no one had responded to this particular constituent.
It doesn't matter, you lied to them.
It does matter, you know what? I didn't remember.
I'm saying that you.
It's, it's hearsay.
It's not hearsay. Do you want to comment on it? I said you wrote an op-ed, you said, I said you wrote an email, you responded back. I did, I never wrote that.
Okay, Nancy's correction is noted, and your correction is noted.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna abstain from this since I missed the second half of the meeting. I don't feel appropriate.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention, okay. Next item on the agenda.
Nancy was a nay, I think.
Oh, Nancy was a nay? Yes, I was. Nay and one abstention. Motion passed. Okay, um, did we do the budget? Yes, we did the budget meeting notes. Okay, next item on the agenda, correspondences. None?
Um, no, not this time.
Reports from solicitors.
I have no comments tonight, Madam Chair.
Township engineer?
I have something to add later.
All right. Chief, I mean lieutenant?
Glad to be back.
Yeah, it is good. And if, if you didn't, if you didn't catch the note in the e-news, Lieutenant Ziegler is a proud, and we are proud to have him as a graduate from the FBI Academy. That happens like, ooh, June 8th?
June 8th was the last.
June 8th. He, he's, yeah.
Congratulations.
There are six, six police officers who have graduated from the FBI Academy in the history of Doylestown Township. There are, I, there were 127, no, 27 countries represented at this event?
25 countries, 47 states.
Okay, and there were 258 graduates?
Yes.
And from almost every state in the country was represented at this graduation. The most amazing thing of the whole thing, besides seeing the lieutenant get his graduation diploma, was there was a representative from Lebanon who, who, he was chosen by his, his fellow graduates to make the address. He spoke so, he was so heartfelt, so intelligent, so engaging, and he spoke for 20 minutes, never used a note. He was just, he, he was more patriotic and, and gung ho for the United States than anyone I've ever heard speak before. And he went home to Lebanon with this degree representing the FBI in his hometown, in his home nation. And he, it was worth the trip, and he's probably the best speaker I ever heard. And you were lucky to have him as a classmate.
Yes.
So, congratulations, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is report from the Director of Operations.
I have a few items. The first is request for the board to approve Michael Baker International's proposal for the final design for the New Britain Road Trail. As for the engineering, board previously approved their preliminary design and their scope of work for now to finish this and for the plans to be ready to go out to bid is a total $73,000, $73. We're asking for the board's approval for that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I ask a question? I was looking at the total dollar amount, we're at $103,000, but there's still things that are outstanding. Do we have a sense of how much more?
That's what the final, that's what the final design is for.
That's total final design, everything?
Was for the preliminary design and to, to evaluation, and then this is now for the final design, and this is what wraps it up and takes it to the bid, to the bids.
Okay, all right, now, I, I misread, I misread it then, my, my apologies. There might be still something outstanding, my apologies.
I'll second.
Motion in second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Others?
Uh, the next one is a, a addendum to MKSD's scope of work for the Community Recreation Center. This is their, one second, their third, fourth, I'm sorry, fifth addendum. This is for $16,100 and includes some additional wiring, which was not included in the original scope for security purposes in the building. We are required by code to have EV chargers, so we have to amend that plan and provide wiring out to those for future EV chargers. That was brought up by Mr. Salisbury, our Code Enforcement Director. Also, some reworking of the generator to tie in our bathrooms and our Kids Castle cameras that are gonna go into the future and be installed. Also, our AV wiring, which was also not in that original design, and some electrical work as well for the building to tie into our existing Public Works buildings. So, I'm asking, we're asking for the board's approval for $16,100.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I ask another question? This particular scope of work, it looks like is combining both the rec center and the bathrooms and the courts, correct? The way it's, the way it's combined in the scope of work?
The electrical distribution system is there, that's gonna, it's gonna be designed and then so that they can be done at the same time because we're feeding, we plan to feed the, the Kids Castle cameras, the permanent cameras, and the bathroom electricity from this new electrical service, which will be located at the back of the recreation center, and also will tie in our Public Works buildings.
If we wanted them separate, will they also provide that way just for some reason?
What do you mean by separate?
I mean, the electrical service to the bathrooms. Right now, the only way to do that is through the rec center, is that correct?
It's not the only way to do it, but we feel that's the, the right way to do it. Since we are upgrading the electrical service to that for the proposed building, we feel that that's the right thing to do is tie all that off, off of that existing or that proposed service, which would feed those two locations.
And, just bear with me, so the timeline then for that would be, it'd have to be up, the rec center would have to go in before the bathrooms could go in in order to have the service and the cameras fed, is that correct?
The electrical service needs to be installed before the bathrooms could be powered, but it doesn't mean the bathrooms couldn't be constructed as its own project and go parallel.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. I just went, so I was just trying to understand the plot. Thank you, okay.
Just a motion in second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Board one? Anything else, Sunday?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right, take your time.
I have a memo to the board to send a number of items to bid as well. As you can see, we're trying to clean up and get rid of things, and so this is, we've kind of packaged stuff out of the park and rec trailers. So, you see my memo, there's sound equipment that we have, kitchen items, conference room, tables and chairs that we're bundling for bid. I'm asking for the board's approval to send that items and as well as traffic signal poles that are coming out of the intersection of Swamp and Eastern Road as part of our early grant to put them up for auction. So, I'd like the board's approval to do that.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Just a motion in second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And the last item is for Mr. Torpe.
I am looking for approval from the board for change order number one to the 2023 Doylestown Road Program, Part One. Essentially, we needed to add crosswalks for the, the trail on, on, on old Iron Hill Road at Mystic View Lane, Riding Lane, and Longwood Circle. This was just for the addition of that paint striping. Total cost of those improvements, $2,798.25, increasing the total contract price to $929,917.45.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Five and O? Is anything else, Dave?
Thank you.
Manager?
Yes, in your packet, you have the first memo from Stacy Crandell, our Assistant Manager, regarding the consultant for the MS4 Annual Reports and Outfall Inspection. And Stacy can answer any questions, but you can see from the memo that Gilmore and Associates had the low quote for $19,000 or the $23,100. Stacy, can you explain the difference?
That's with lab fees, so if they have, yeah, if they have to do any testing, that would be the additional cost.
We're asking for the board's approval to engage Gilmore and Associates to work on the outfall project and inspection and testing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Just one second.
That's the second memo.
All right, so motion in second for the first outfall report amounting to $19,000 or $23,100. Motion in second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
And the second memo also from Stacy is regarding the services for Stream Bank restoration. And again, Gilmore and Associates provided the lowest quote for $70,800. Stacy can answer any specific questions regarding the project.
Anyone have any questions with Stacy?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Five and O. All right, next item is the new business. No one?
Supervisors' reports.
Oh, sorry. Do that every time. Supervisors' reports. Jan?
Yeah, I just, I just want to start real quick about what we just approved, the bank restoration and the outfall testing. Just for folks who may not be aware, this is part of a state-mandated program to make sure that we are not discharging additional pollutants into the Neshamnee Creek waterway. It's part of our, our responsibility to make sure that we protect our waterway and every waterway downriver from us. And it's something we're required by state law to do. As far as other updates go, Bike and Hike was very active this morning. We had several residents come in to speak about getting their neighborhoods hooked up to the, our bike network. Speaking of the Neshamnee Creek, that was involved. How, how do we get a bridge across the Neshamnee Creek that's down the road someday? But, yeah, a lot of projects, like the one we just approved for New Britain Road going to final design, and we are also getting closer to the Shady Retreat Road, getting the grants and approvals in process for that. And then my other committee, the Water and Sewer Board, we have not met in a couple months because we have been trying to coordinate with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority to go over the 537 Plan for additional questions on that, and we will be doing that next month. So, hopefully, you'll be seeing more information about that very shortly.
Thank you. Nancy, you have anything?
I'll, I'll go last.
Right, Jen, do you have anything?
Sure. So, I attended the Pension Advisory Committee as liaison, and I'm happy to report that we had a meeting with our actuary, and he indicated that we were an exceptional township for our forward thinking when it came to our pension planning. Currently, we're working to pay down our pension debt, which is a very fiscally responsible thing to do. And even though we do end up paying a little bit more now, it's gonna save us quite a bit in the long run. And to get those kudos from an actuary is a pretty good thing because they know their business. I also, I wanted to thank Anne for that lovely tribute to Janine. She really is deserving. I, I love working with our EAC. They are a group of wonderful people, and Janine is outstanding. It's such a great joy to watch her receive that award.
We, I met with our park and rec, we had, since our last meeting, park and rec has met. I, you know, if you have not gone out to the Summer Concert Series, I encourage you to do so. They do a wonderful job of putting that together, and they have a lot of ideas and things that are going to carry through at Central Park. So, there is really going to be year-round engagement and activities at Central Park. So, lots of things to come. It will not stop with the Summer Concert Series. I also serve as the liaison for Kids Castle. I have for, I think about 10 years now. I've been working with Joe Salvati, the Chair of the Kids Castle, and serving on both Park and Rec and Kids Castle. We are in a situation right now where there is repeated vandalism at Kids Castle. It's becoming a problem, and, I mean, any sort of vandalism is a problem, but, but we've had a number of situations. So, we, we have put it out on, our township staff put out on the Doylestown Facebook pages to kind of alert because there was, you know, a lot of misinformation going around, but we want to make sure that we are letting residents know. The other day, we had something else, another vandalism take place where someone set off fireworks inside the castle. If you are a parent of a child, do not just drop your kids off at Kids Castle. You know, make sure that you're understanding what your kids are doing down there. If you're a parent or a kid and you're down there and you see something, say something. Don't let things go unnoticed because what's happening now is becoming dangerous situations. And, you know, what's gonna end up happening is it's going to, you know, end up in shutting down the beauty of that park and everything that it stands for in this community for so long. And as many of you know, this park is a community-built park, put together by the people of this township. And, you know, we want it to remain, but it needs to remain a safe space. So, please be on the lookout and be vigilant about what is going on down there. And I want to thank our, our law enforcement for, you know, their efforts, you know, in, in helping out and being down there and being active in watching and, and taking care of situations.
Thanks. The capital campaign, community capital campaign kicked off last Wednesday at the first concert of the season, and I, we had a great response. And we're gonna be, the capital campaign representatives are gonna be at every concert because we had overwhelming interest in the, in the recreation center, what's gonna be built, what amenities are gonna be, and people were really eager to, to, you know, suck up all the information. So, we're gonna be there at every concert and make sure that everyone knows what's going on and how they can help create, help with the funding of the, of the project, which is not just the building, of course, it's the, it's the, the family cottage comfort station and all the courts. So, that's all I have. Nancy, you wanted to go last?
Sure. Thanks, Supervisor Mannion. I was gonna actually ask about the Kids Castle. I know there was another concern. I was just wondering, do we have an update on the cameras? When do we have a timeline with? When, do we have a timeline with, when they'll be delivered and installed?
The cameras were, are off, were ordered probably May twentieth or thereabouts, and we received the brackets, and the cameras are still anticipated any day now. We've, Dave and I have both spoken with Rick Shea, our facility manager, and as soon as they are received, they will be installed.
Thank you for that update. I really appreciate it. Also, want to congratulate Lieutenant Ziegler on his graduation of the FBI National Academy on June eighth. As it was in the article, you're the sixth officer in our department in history to complete this prestigious program. And I also thank you for toughing it out in a, in a single bed for ten weeks in the dorms. So that was awesome. Also, want to thank our Park and Rec Committee for the robust concert series, hearing lots of great things about it, and we have an awesome lineup, so thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to thank is our staff and community, our consultants and, and Janine Mitchell, actually, from our EAC on working with a community's concern that actually happened in my own neighborhood. I met some of these people, you know, some of my neighbors for the first time, and they were pretty prepared. And what came out of the meeting was really the township needs to have a more robust conversations about naturalization and, you know, identifying best practices in communication and funding and volunteer opportunities. But we all agreed that we need to make that space better than the way we found it. And I really look forward to being part of the solution. I see some of my neighbors are here. I don't know if you have anything to say about it, I, you know, but I appreciate the collaboration and the conversation back and forth. Stephanie, thank you for helping to moderate that situation. Then my last thing I wanted to talk about, which isn't as easy, is really, I want to really clear the air about a June sixth email response that I sent to the Board of Supervisors and Office Heads. My mail, my email was really sent to somebody who's been a subject matter expert in the Park and Rec for the last twelve years, as well served on the PAC Committee, and did a lot in terms of all the benefit analysis for the recreation center, which is all the information is included in the minutes, so I recommend you read them all. For those who don't have a, a copy, I'm going to give just a little context of what happened. In March, this person, I'm going to call JD, sent an email to our Board of Supervisors with grave concerns, voicing his opposition to the rec center based on inflation. In April, he met with Chair Lyons and Manager Mason for additional financials and clarification. I also reached out to him. I don't know if our other supervisors did, but I did because I wanted to understand what was happening. We're about to spend the most amount of money this township has ever considered for a project. In May, he sent an, an email with a robust, detailed financial project, project spreadsheet with notes along with an email asking that we cut the Community Recreation Center because it did not make financial sense. But there were, but because there was not enough programming, and with inflation, it did not make sense to continue with this project. But he did support the completion of the courts and our new Kids Castle bathrooms. So why do I keep continuing, why do I continue to bring up this, you know, to public, talking about the cost, the community value? We obviously have the votes here within the board to push it through, but I'm going to tell you why. It's called transparency. It's that simple. So to date, we do not know the cost of the recreation center. Why wouldn't put as much scrutiny into every dollar we plan to spend for the largest project the township has ever proposed? Why wouldn't anybody who we've worked with and partnered with, with our volunteers for the last twelve years not reach out to speak to this person to find out what they know, how they did their finances? Does it still make sense? So on, on June sixth, when I sent that email to the, to him, and I CC'd back every Board of Supervisor because I have nothing to hide, I was responding to a trusted subject matter expert on the rec center. He understands the profit and loss, the operational costs. So, you know, some of the things that, you know, I've been called out on, that I was a liar, which is why I'm responding, is that when I sent the email back, my comments were, "Thank you for your email and a thorough review of the current recreational center financials." I understand, as a former member of Ways and Means Committee, you played a large role in the cost-benefit analysis used early on by the board. Our current board voted five to zero to move forward and explore the costs and community impact of the proposed recreation center. As fiscal stewards of the township, it is prudent we review the Community Recreation Center to need with the aftermath of a major pandemic and repercussions on our economy and job force, especially since the data was collected in 2019 and 2020. I agree, this is my words, I agree with your collusion, your conclusions, excuse me, that under the current conditions, the Community Rec Center is overpriced due to inflation. The numbers certainly dictate, dictate that the twenty-year promise of a recreation center has expired. It is disappointing to many, and knowing you spoke to Stephanie Barber before the spreadsheet was completed on profit-loss, debt services is reassuring. We are currently looking at a price tag that could exceed seventy percent of our budget using an estimated cost of eleven million dollars for a project and a township budget of sixteen million dollars. In April, I asked the board to put the recreation center on a referendum in the fall election. It was voted down. I am still deeply troubled because it is a huge financial burden, and the underutilization is a serious concern based on the program activity reports provided by the Director of Parks in April. Some additional facts I wanted to share is that in 2013 and 19, the township saw a decline in program participation. With the current rented trailer, our programs have decreased even more with less than one percent of our constituents participating. This is not a slight on our staff or programs, but it shows that even with limited capacity, we're not filling our programs. In addition, the community wants our better line with an expanded YMCA and the plethora of gyms in Doylestown that offer amenities not included in this proposed building. Some additional concerns about the recreation center include, it no longer has a green building initiatives as promised and were committed during, with Ready 100. And in December, our EAC asked for green heating options and adding a ninety thousand dollars to the recreation center's price tag so it can, so it can have extra support for polar, solar panels when we're ready in the future was our solution. I also said there no longer has community partners committed to using the space because DAA is no longer interested. My source is from our February, from a February eighth meeting with the Township Manager and the Director of Park and Rec. While we were discussing the floors, we also agreed that we have no committed partners to use this gym. This was confirmed, and especially when we switched from wood to a resin composite. So an apology should be used to, sent to DAA that you put them on the spot since it's not their responsibility to finance our gym. I also said that we no longer have a wood floor gym, which is, which was used in the revenue generation calculation for the profit-loss. We also no longer qualify as an emergency shelter with the elimination of showers. The prefab building will not have showers despite the fact it was part of the original plan presented to the Board of Supervisors. At our own September twenty-second planning commission, they stated that this standalone building does not qualify as an emergency shelter. What makes this building necessary when we have schools, YMCA's, and churches in the community? So also, it no longer includes a catering kitchen. Having three sinks does not qualify as a catering kitchen. It has to have commercial appliances and a special vending and sprinkler system. We also no longer are using, can use the feasibility study assumptions provided when we, we made, did our original board, board vote. Excuse me. No longer is it affordable money to borrow as our feasibility study has the original building at only four million dollars. I stand steadfast that we can work together to be fiscal stewards and have greater impact on the entire township park system by being creative within our own existing buildings and pavilions and improving all parks rather than to commit to the recreation center. Our summer programs have already proven we can do it. I agree with your assessment that the courts and bathrooms are the only imminent township priority at this time. I believe good governance is the ability to pivot and be fluid in your decision-making, in our decision-making. Finally, this project has not gone out to bid, and the Township Manager and the Board of Supervisors has the responsibility to tread carefully when committing to the public about the recreation center because we don't know the total cost of the entire project. The Township Manager suggested that with bid will be provided to the board for a formal vote in July of 2023 at our Board of Supervisor meeting. They have information on the website and newsletter reads differently, and I plan to address this with the board at our June sixth meeting. Thank you for your efforts and thorough analysis of the financials. Hope to see you at a meeting in the future. Best regards, Nancy. As I stated, transparency is a key to good governance, and the onus is on us as a township to be undeniably use data-driven decision-making to prove that recreation center is necessary. We're of a community rich with multiple gyms, a YMCA a half a mile away, with thirty-nine-dollar-a-month teen memberships and Silver Sneaker programs and a pool to meet the needs of our ages, you know, of those that are sixty-five and older, which compromise twenty-five percent of our, in our recent consensus here in the township. His spreadsheets, the Park and Rec program participation, participation that we received in April makes total sense, and we should all be scrutinizing before the Board of Supervisor plans to put a financial burden on the taxpayers by increasing taxes, adding staffing, and carrying on costs with a large net footprint in Central Park.
You done?
That's all I have to say.
I'm just a point of order. The referendum that you referred to was not voted down. It failed for one of a second when you made your motion. Anybody else?
No, I just, just, just a couple of things that, that email is all contained in the minutes as are the responses to that, that I noted in the last meeting that point out some of the infactual data that, that Nancy provided in that email. You know, referring, and, and listen, we want to hear from everyone about their thoughts, and, and this has always been an open and transparent process. You know, referring to that you're dealing with a subject matter expert. He hasn't, the, the subject matter expert has no subject matter expertise in Park and Rec. He served on the Ways and Means Committee. Our entire Ways and Means Committee is, has scrutinized this and is in full approval of this project. Our entire Park and Rec Committee has scrutinized this as, and are in full, you know, fully support this project. So it is not just a board of four people that are dictating a large community center with no support. The support comes from every committee that is involved in this, in this project is in full support of this project. I think we should, anybody who, you know, has questions about it, who doesn't agree with it, come forward and let's talk it through. That's what we should be doing. But to insinuate that there's a lack of transparency on this project is not true. Just like every project, you don't know the final number until it goes out to bid. We did not know the final number on this building when we approved it until it went out to bid. That's how that works. You will never know the final number until it goes out to bid. That's not something we're hiding. We have a general idea based off subject matter experts, engineers, who inform us that this looks like is what the project is going to cost. We don't know the final number until it goes out to bid. But that is how every project is. That is not something new. That's how this works. So there's, there's not much more we can do until it goes out to bid. Now, I'll tell you, if it goes out to bid and the cost is millions of dollars more than was anticipated, well, yeah, then we have discussions to be had. But I remain confident and hopeful that our engineers and our consultants, who we've worked with, have gotten it pretty right, and that they're going to come back with what we approved as the estimated cost of this project.
All right, let's move on. The next item on the agenda is a matter for the zoning hearing board and an application of 332 Pine Run Road.
It is for a family apartment, accessory family apartment, and would recommend, along with the small variance, would recommend that be left to the zoning hearing board.
All right, so be it. Next item is the treasurer's report for June twentieth, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's report? Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list for June twentieth, 2023?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next regular scheduled meeting of this board is Tuesday, July eighteenth at seven PM. On Tuesday, July eighteenth, the Finance Committee will meet with the budget, meet with a budget work session with the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors at five PM. Keep up to date with township news, going to, sign up for eNews@doylestownpa.org. And upcoming events, June twenty-first, Thompson Performing Arts Series continues with the Leonard Skinner light concert called High Noon, as well as continued efforts on a capital campaign to engage with the community. On June twenty-fourth, the Village Improvement Association's Village Fair is happening on, in Central Park, beginning at noon. On August first, National Night Out from the Doylestown Township Police Department is happening in Central Park from four PM on. And June twenty-first, annual golf outing, Doylestown Country Club. And I do believe tee time or shotgun is nine AM. It's open to the public, so please join. All the proceeds will go to the community center and the park improvements. Did I see any, any comments or public opinions or public comment not associated with, with the agenda? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And we have documents to sign, so don't everyone run out.